And now it's not, so thank you all for coming. Good evening. Uh, would you please rise and join me in our flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Okay, for the record, yes ma'am.
I just wanted to compliment the young lady on realizing there are no commas in there, and you do just go on. Very good.
Well, good job. So for the record, all staff are here and all council are here. And council, you know the drill, we are at item three, the consent calendar. We have items A through F.
I move we accept items A through F.
Thank you.
Motion was made by council member Dunn Lee and seconded by council member Kinzer to approve the consent calendar items A through F. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And it carries unanimously. Thank you, council. So now we're on to item four, which is the reason I think most of you are here. Very special night. We have some special awards to give, and I'm gonna move down in front. So tonight is a very special night for me. I didn't dress up because it's steak night. I dressed up because we have some officers here from our distinguished police department getting a lot of awards. So there's two types of awards, and I think Tamara, are you gonna be helping me keep this straight? Thank you. We have distinguished service commendations, and we have life-saving awards, and they're very different, and also similar. So the distinguished service awards are about bravery and doing the right thing in a tough situation, and I think a lot of us kinda wonder about ourselves, what we do in these situations, you know, kids play computer games where they get to fight the war or whatever, but this is real stuff. And our officers go into these situations not really knowing what to expect, but they go in anyway. So Tamara, if you could bring me the first award I wanna read, call the officers up.
This is the first.
Thank you. So could our police officers, Daniel Eddy, Zach Carroll, and Katie Wilson, please come And I'll read the narrative. Sorry, the mic cord's a little short here. "On May 5th, 2016, Cedar Woolley officers were dispatched to 300 Ferry Street in the city limits of Cedar Woolley. Officers arrived and located three male subjects as the reporting party had described. There was a handgun in one of the male suspect's hands behind the Bank of America. Officers took positions in the area prior to making contact. Officer Carroll could see one of the males pointing the handgun in the direction of Officer Wilson. The officers used good tactics and were able to take the subjects into custody without loss of life or injury. The handgun was found out to be a realistic 1911-style pellet handgun. At the time of the 911 call, through the initial contact of the suspects, all of these officers believed the handgun to be real." So I want you to think about that. You're coming up on somebody behind a bank, a group of people with a gun that you think is real. "Each of these officers showed great heroism while exercising reasonable tactics, and they believed a substantial risk to their safety existed." Now think about what we've seen throughout our country where people were just shot for that. I'm so proud of you. Chief, could you please present the awards and all that? That's for you. You're the leader of the pack here. If your families wanna come up and get a picture, please feel free to come up and get a picture with your family member. Jason Harris, Dave Pierce, and Austin McCombs. I guess Dave's not here tonight, he's been working late, but we'll read the citation for everybody. Come on up, guys. "On September 23rd, 2016, Cedar Woolley Sergeant Daniel McElwath, Sergeant Jason Harris, Sergeant Dave Pierce, and Officer Austin McCombs responded and assisted with the active shooter incident in the Cascade Mall located in Burlington, Washington. Sergeant Pierce and Officer McCombs were on duty at the time of the shooting. Sergeant Harris and Sergeant McElwath self-dispassed with their individual responses. Sergeant McElwath was later called out as a member of the countywide SWAT team. Sergeant Pierce and Officer McCombs responded from the city to assist in the initial securing of the mall and the surrounding areas. Sergeant Harris and Sergeant McElwath arrived a short time later. All four officers were placed on entry teams and entered the mall with knowledge that the suspected shooter was not in custody and with the intention of stopping the suspect from further assaults. All four officers participated in clearing, searching, and securing areas within the mall. Sergeant McElwath continued to assist as a member of the SWAT team by further clearing and searching of the mall and other surrounding areas." So put yourself in this position. You think there's a good chance there's a guy with a gun in there waiting anywhere. This is a nightmare. Behind a counter, behind a clothing rack, and these guys went in and cleared that. So couldn't be more proud. And chief, you can present the commendations, please.
This is a, not everybody, this is the worst nightmare for the whole valley. I think Dan and Tessa and the kids were, you guys were at a ballgame, weren't ya? They were at a ballgame, he dropped everything, went and got his 70 pounds of SWAT gear on, and ran to the mall and spent the next eight hours looking for a bad guy who had just killed people. Jason had stayed home sick that day, and jumped in his car as soon as we called him, and ran right to the scene, and they both led teams in. Sergeant Pierce at the time, he was on duty with Austin. They gave me a call, said should be, you know, we're on our way, we're gonna go. Went over and did exactly the same thing. This is exactly what we're trained for, this is what we prepare for. It still scares the heck out of everybody, and I do appreciate the families that have to sit there and wonder where their loved ones are gonna be, 'cause it's a scary thing. I was with Fred Meyer when all this is going on, I'm thinking, I've got a whole police department going to the mall, and I don't know what's going on. But this was, this is one of the most incredible nights for all of us. Eventually, 200 officers, 200-plus officers showed up at the mall from all over western Washington. It was an incredible response. I had a chief from eastern Washington ask if he can come over from Winthrop and just cover for us. Said, nah, you can stay in Winthrop, we got everybody else here. But if you guys can give these guys a hand, I'd appreciate it.
So as before, if you wanna get pictures, come on up. We got plenty of time for this stuff. Come on, Austin, no? You guys wanna get a? Audrey, come up and get a picture with you dad? It's a big day. Sergeant Harris, Officer James Hannerwalt, Officer Angela Wagoner, no relation, Officer Brian Hall, please come forward. "On November 7th, 2016, Cedar Woolley Sergeant Jason Harris, Officers James Hannerwalt, Officer Angela Wagoner, and Officer Brian Hall responded to a possible suicide attempt in the city of Cedar Woolley. Officer Wagoner responded to the residents of the reporting party. There she got the pertinent information leading to later location and rescue of the victim. Sergeant Harris, Officer Hannerwalt, and Officer Hall started checking multiple possible locations around the city for the victim. Officers responded to a residence just outside the city limits of Cedar Woolley where they located the victim inside of a locked garage containing a running vehicle. Officers noted the inside of the garage was filled with exhaust and it was difficult to see from outside of the garage to the inside. Sergeant Harris, Officer Hannerwalt, Officer Hall breached the door and entered the exhaust-filled garage. They located the victim lying inside her vehicle unresponsive. The victim was removed from the garage and aid was rendered by officers. After extraction of the female, officers continued to experience the effects of the exhaust..." And page two, pardon me. "While officers were attempting to rescue the victim, Officer Wagoner held the reporting party back so officers could work. This included a physical assault by the reporting party to Officer Wagoner. Each of these officers' actions caused the life-saving of another human being." And I wanna add to this, a lot of times they get calls that maybe it's real, maybe it's not, maybe the person stomped out mad and had a beer, or just went for a walk to cool down. There was every chance for our officers to take that tack. This was a person who had access to lots and lots of homes because they were in the real estate business, so they had to stick with it and look at each one of those homes until they found her. And it would've been easy to just think, that's probably nothing, she'll show up. They saved her a life, so great job, folks. Please give them a hand.
Yes! Yes!
Do we want to get Hannerwalt?
Yes! Yes!
Any pictures?
Empty fullest.
This girl should get a say with daddy.
Good thing I wasn't in the car.
Oh, okay.
You wanna get a picture with James too?
We can go back here.
You could bring your husband.
I know.
Take a picture of him if you want.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Do you need a snap picture for ya? Do you guys have a picture or good picture?
I was supposed to say, did you? I was following.
You guys all just stand up here.
Alright. So we're on zoom in, let's zoom back out a little bit, there we go. Ready? I'll take two of them. There we go.
You can stay quiet.
So second life-saving commendation to Officer Brian Hall. "February 17th, 2016, Cedar Woolley officers were dispatched to Pioneer Center North located in the city of Cedar Woolley for the report of a suicide attempt. Officer Hall arrived first and started CPR on the unresponsive male victim. Other officers and aide arrived on the scene. The male was transported to a hospital where he received further treatment. Officer Hall's quick action and chest compressions were credited with the survival of the male at the hospital. Male has since recovered from that day's trauma. Officer Hall's action caused the life of another to be saved." So I wanna talk a little bit about, it seems kind of academic when it's not somebody we know or a family member, but think about if that was your family member, and they had not taken correct action and they passed away. That's what they're doing by saving lives. They're giving somebody a future, and they're making a family complete, so it's amazing. Thank you. So while we have everybody here before my crew slides out, could everybody in the police department here stand up? Can you guys stand up for me? Tamara, Ariel, Wanda? You guys stand up for me? Dion, why don't you stand up too? You're not with us, but you're out there doing the same thing. You may not know it, but this curmudgeonly old guy back here, Harold, he's an old retired Cedar Woolley guy. Harold, can you stand up for us? Tom? On your feet, Razon? Yeah, Jared Crouch back there, we might as well own him, he lives in town and wants to be a city councilman, can you stand up? These are all people that are doing the same thing every day, and thank you, and that's, and mostly the rest of you are family. If we stood up, there would be all of us standing up. But thank you to the families for supporting this. I know it's hard for you, and we do appreciate you letting us borrow your people for a few years. And just remember, people in this line of work often live well until their 50s, so we got a lot to look forward to. Thank you, chief. And I wanna thank the city council for helping me make good on my promise to give our first responders the best training and equipment that we can afford, so, and thanks for making good use of it. You do not have to stay to the end of this, if you just came for the ceremony, but you're welcome to stay if you like. We won't take offense. So that brings us to item five on the agenda, public comment period. If you care to make public comment, please come up one at a time, state your name and address for the record at the podium. Limit your comments to about three minutes, and remember, this is not a question and answer period, you're just gonna address the council. Do I have any takers? Public comment period is open.
Good evening, everyone. Loretta Serenin, 821 Park Cottage Place in Cedar Woolley. "Mr. Berg, in the recent city scene, wrote to inform us the city council had the votes for the library proposal and reminded us of representative government. And the other part of the equation is you were elected to serve our best interest and are held accountable by those who are elected. As a citizen in this representative democracy, I'm doing my duty to ensure good governance, integrity, and accountability are upheld. I've looked and listened and heard and not heard or seen evidence of what I think of good governance and accountability with the library proposal or the process. The council bond, also known as the limited tax general obligation, that you will use to pay for the new county library building must come from existing funds. Where are the funds going to come from? What city budgets and services may expansion be delayed or short change to pay the debt? Could I assume that you have a contingency plan if the economy takes a downward turn? What services may be cut to meet the debt payment? A debt that you will have obligated the citizens to pay without a vote? In addition to paying the debt, the city will continue to pay our annual library budget. Tell me, where is the fiscal advantage? We have a thriving library that spans the history of our city. It has accumulated a valuable book collection, and it is run by a committed, dedicated, and experienced staff. Why would we close our library, transfer its assets and wealth to a Skagit Central? Our library birthed by a grassroots citizen effort and turned over to the city to govern, protect, and has been supported by taxpayers for over 10 decades. Citizens and patrons in this room came forward and testified how the library is a heart of our community and a treasured resource. The intrinsic value of our library, I believe, has been devalued or overlooked in the process. The library, I think, doesn't have any problems. There's just problems that have been created by the elected officials that we now need to nurture to do these sort of things. I don't believe that this is just the mayor's and council's decisions. The citizens of Cedar Woolley have a right to have their say because they will lose their current library, pay for a new building, and continue to pay our current annual budget to the county library. I celebrate the fact that we have two viable funded libraries within our city limits. Let's rejoice with that wonderful gift that we have been given and support one another. The proposal is not necessary, but I do believe since our library is a public-owned institution, the final proposal does require a vote. Thank you."
Thank you, Loretta. Anyone else for public comment period? Okay, this time I close the public comment period, and we'll move on to new business, item six. No material, senior center facility improvements. Are you introducing this, Aaron?
Yes, thank you. We've also got a couple of members in the audience today to help.
Oh, I see Alan.
Senior Center Director and the chairperson for the Senior Center Advisory Committee have graciously come to talk to the council as well. So the background on this is Councilman Owen raised the issue on behalf of some constituents last year to put air conditioning into the senior center, and ultimately that was included in the city council's adopted 2017 budget at the $35,000 price level. Nathan, there he is, I know, I saw you here a second ago. Nathan and the public works staff, working with Julie and Mark, put together a bid spec and a package, went out to bid to put in air conditioning. We were getting informal feedback from potential bidders that they could put in a system and they could spend the $35,000, but they were not confident that it would achieve our purposes. The best possible result is that it could cool the main room, but none of the other rooms, and they couldn't guarantee that it would even cool the main room. So Nathan and I got to talking and recognized that that capital investment would possibly not actually achieve our stated goal and would drive utility costs up forever, and we pulled that out from the advertisement stage, let Councilman Owen know what we're working on, and we went and visited the Senior Center Advisory Committee and just put the question on the table to the user group. What are your priorities? What would you like to accomplish? And we had, you know, a good conversation, a pretty lengthy conversation. They actually do have a list of items that they're interested in. Ultimately, working through some different scenarios, the Senior Center Advisory Committee is recommending to the city council that we pivot, use this money to, instead of installing air conditioning, to fixing our skylight situation, which is kind of a leaking skylight problem, but not replacing the skylights. Actually trust that in, roof it, and put transom windows in to provide the indirect lighting. That's got the benefit of solving the leak. We think it has some likelihood of reducing the heat from solar gain as a result of deleting the current skylights with solid roofing and transom windows. We put in an exhaust fan in that location so we can suck hot air out, and we believe that to be about a $20,000 project. The additional dollars then, based upon what's available, could be used to put in low-E windows along the southern face, or at least low-E window coverings, possibly even retrofit some of the lighting from conventional to LED. So a suite of improvements that could produce a similar effect, you know, the desired effect, which is more comfortable temperature, but will also undoubtedly reduce operating costs in the facility. And I think now's probably a good time for either of you, or both of you probably, to come on up and give your view. And ultimately, the request for the city council tonight is to, you know, authorize us to move forward in a different direction than what we'd identified in our 2017 budget.
Can you give us your name and address, just for the record, please?
I'm Chuck Steele, I live at 437 Spring Lane in Cedar Woolley, and I'm the, I'm on the board for the Senior Center Advisory Board. And we really appreciated Aaron and Nathan coming over and talking with us last week and explaining some of the options, and we gave them input. We also, of course, appreciate the fact that the city council thought of the senior center in their 2017 budget, and it's, in my personal opinion, it's kind of a little bit of a blessing perhaps that we don't, it's not feasible to put in the air conditioning because I kind of thought that that was the simplest way to spend the money in the first place because we have a skylight...
which is more comfortable temperature, but will also undoubtedly reduce operating costs in the facility. And I think now is probably a good time for either of you, or both of you probably, to come on up and give your view. And ultimately, the request for the city council tonight is to, you know, authorize us to move forward in a different direction than what we'd identified in our 2017 budget.
Can you give us your name and address, just for the record, please?
I'm Chuck Steele. I live at 437 Spring Lane in Seabrook. And I'm the, I'm on the board for the senior center advisory board. And we really appreciated Aaron and Nathan coming over and talking with us last week and explaining some of the options, and we gave them input. We also, of course, appreciate the fact that the city councils thought of the senior center in their 2017 budget. And it's, in my personal opinion, it's kind of a little bit of a blessing perhaps that we don't, it's not feasible to put in the air conditioning because I kind of thought that that was the simplest way to spend the money in the first place because we have a skylight situation that's kind of sucking the heat out of the building and making it hard to heat it in the winter and hard to cool it in the summer. The feasibility of replacing that skylight with kind of a, I equate it to a barn vents appearance and putting the, there'll still be windows up there, but the windows, excuse me, will have e-glass on them. And we're doing, able to do that apparently for, we're expecting bids of something like $20,000 for that, according to Aaron. And that leaves $15,000 to perhaps improve the south-facing windows. We have an awful lot of lights that are used in that building. If we can go to more efficient lighting, that would be an ongoing savings. It's kind of hard to put this all together in one bid, but it would be very easy for us to spend the $35,000, help the senior center, help the people use it, keep it cooler, and save the city utility money.
And I didn't mention before, we also talked about replacing our number of missing screens. We're gonna get that going. Nathan probably already started that, as well as in terms of the lighting retrofit, also putting in lighting controls. So instead of just switches, putting in some motion-activated lighting that would save dollars. You know, two other areas we discussed, kitchen flooring is ultimately gonna need to be on the list, probably not within this budget. But if we do have a contractor out there doing building construction, you know, we've talked about as part of our memorial park revitalization plan, opening up the, I guess that would be the northwest corner room to have some full light French doors that would open onto a patio in the park that would allow, you know, kind of the yoga studio-type feel so you could be indoor/outdoor in that particular room. I see that as the possible bid alternative when we've got a contractor already on site cutting into the building that would provide more functional space. So we talked about a few other projects as well. It turns out the advisory committee has a, has a few ideas up their sleeves about how to spend money on the building.
I was kind of enlightened by the fact that Nathan mentioned that we're spending about $8,000 on utilities for that building, and anything we can do to save that would be just wonderful. If we can make the building more comfortable at the same time that we're saving energy, I think that's a plus for everybody. A slight side comment, I've been impressed since I moved to Seabrook about 11 or 12 years ago about how the governments came together and share the cost of taking care of that, the seniors under two or three different programs and two or three or four different jurisdictions getting the funding, and it works so smoothly. It's just wonderful. A lot of that's in our particular case because Ellen has been kind of a constant stalwart or compassionate person that's always, always there and always making things work together smoothly. And when I say, "I wanna go to the city council and I wanna talk about blah, blah, blah," she says, "Wait a minute, Chuck." So she's, she's also back there explaining to me how things, how things really work. Thank you for your time.
Well, Chuck, can I hold you here for just a second? Because maybe some council members have some questions for it. But also, I wanna go tip a hat to Chuck for really bringing the issue to the forefront for us, and we're gonna get to a solution on it. So thanks to Chuck for that. Does any council member have any questions or comments for Chuck Steele?
I've got some comments, but I don't have any questions for him.
Okay.
I have a question. Where are you gonna go? I was just wondering if more trees around that window, around the south-facing window would help? I mean, usually, I know. I'm just saying, like, for, in addition to everything else. I know my house is really cool because I have trees all around it, even when it's really hot outside.
The south-facing window in this case is on State Street, and so there's, the prior Rotary project and leadership Skagit project have fairly well landscaped that. And believe it or not, there is some debate within the advisory committee about the nature and type and height of landscaping, and so that, that's also, has a separate issue. The low E would solve the windows, so I think we're very confident about that. We could also probably utilize the existing shades more if it became an issue to help block out some of that solar gain.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, summer's nigh, so what do we need to do to move forward? Is there something that could be done?
I'm just looking for a consensus of the council to pivot and use those dollars in the budget. I don't think we need a motion, but really just a consensus that we can move forward and, you know, stay within the 2017 adopted budget. But, you know, when you budgeted that, you were expecting a electric mechanical device that would, you know, suck energy and produce cold air. And what we're proposing is a different solution, but within the same budget, so.
So I mean, we're nearing summer, and so I'm interested in seeing how to move forward with this and proceed.
Well, I believe that Chuck has some to say.
Do you have any guarantee that this is gonna work, Aaron?
Negative. But I do believe it will solve the leak at a minimum.
Hot air out, you gotta have fresh air coming in. And you're still gonna have to open those windows or the doors, and then you've got Ellen's flower beds out there that the air comes in off of them, and the old people, a lot of them can't stand that. They're allergic to it. So I don't know whether that'll work or not. Anything that'll, that'll work to make the people comfortable, I'm for. I don't care how you do it, but $30,000, $35,000, or $20,000, it doesn't make any difference about the price as long as, as long as you accommodate the people. Senior Center's a great place. I go down there quite a bit, and Ellen does a great job. But I wanna see those people accommodated. We seem to accommodate everybody else, you know, including the YMCA, but can't take care of our people.
If we put an exhaust fan in the high point up there where the skylights currently are, and if we put e-glass in and we make the building more efficient and cooler, that's gonna help. We're not gonna have to vent it to the outside as much. And once again, there's no guarantee, but it's, it's kind of common sense. Also, we're planning on getting rid of the flowers that are, the plants that are causing the allergy problem. Just, I understand that that's some of the, so that's a problem in August for a few days here and there. It's not a problem right now when we don't need the windows open every day, and it's allergy season-dependent. And sealing up the whole building and trying to air-condition it would be wonderful, but boy, we're spending $8,000 on utilities right now and then increasing that bill to run air conditioning, and we're just kind of fighting ourselves. This'll be going more towards an environmentally friendly approach to trying to solve the problem with using less energy.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I hate to see, I hate to see that you're not gonna do away with the skylight, right?
I know the proposal will be to remove the skylight and put in a solid roofing where the skylight is today, but along the, I'll just call it the stem wall or the parapet wall that would go up to the, to the new roof, there would be windows. So we could have north-facing windows so we don't have the same solar gain, you get the great north-facing light coming through that same well. So the interior shape will be the same, other than terminate, instead of terminating at the domed, you know, plastic skylights, they would terminate in a solid gypsum wallboard, you know, wall ceiling with transom windows.
You get a lot of light from the skylight. I think without it, it'd be kind of like a dungeon in there.
Yeah, no, there will be less light, I'm sure of that, but there will certainly not be, it will not be no light because there will, there will be windows lining the north side.
Whatever you come up with is gonna be your rear end, not mine as well. But anyway, anything, anything you can do to, to improve it, well, I'm sure it'll be appreciated by all of the seniors.
All right, moving on. Everybody finished? Item seven, written reports. Chief Tucker.
All right, well, thank you for allowing us to get caught up on some much-needed recognition for our people. I know the mayor enjoys getting to do that, and so do I. The folks are doing good work out there all day, every day, but we wanna point out a few of those really special things they've been doing. I've only got a couple of other things. Probably mentioned this before, we're continuing with our active shooter threat training with the school districts. Krista's away for a week on vacation, but I think we're back into it next week, and we're hitting every school in the district, along with the sheriff's office and fire department, and we're all getting together and we're putting our plans together. So that's going along really well with the culmination of a couple of major events later on in the year. And finally, a couple of you have mentioned speeders in your neighborhoods and in the area. I've been tasking the crime watchers with, they have the radar unit in the old blue patrol car, and getting them out there and they're doing some speed studies, they're getting the radar on cars and just seeing how fast cars are going. And that's another car out there, they're not writing tickets or anything like that, but nobody else drives a baby blue Crown Vic but us and the Seattle PD. So you gotta know, it's hopefully slowing some people down. And we had a first for us the other day. Dan Eddy stopped a state trooper. He was down at the school, in the school zone, and car was coming at him, he just zaps it. He turns his lights on so the guy will pull right front, and he goes, "Whoa." And he was just barely at that margin where you would write a ticket anyway, but he was going fast enough to get stopped. And had a little chat with him, like, "You know, you're speeding in a school zone in your patrol car." And so he had a little chat with him, and they both, I think, got a laugh out of it, but it was appropriately handled. But I think the message got out, it's like, "Listen, this is serious. We got kids that are wandering around out here down by the tennis courts, and we need to be mindful of what we're doing." And so I just thought you'd get chuckle out of that. We also got a school board member the other day, but I'm not gonna tell you who that one was. You better take care of him and Rotary. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Clinger.
Well, we're getting into our summer training month, so you're gonna start seeing the guys out on Monday nights late, running around, doing their thing. Monday night, we did have the guys out, they were gonna be out a little bit later than normal, but they ended up over at the fire in Burlington, over there in North Street, so you might have saw them running up the highway into Burlington over there. It was always fun when we get to go other places. Burlington, Mount Vernon showed up with seven people between the two departments, and we showed up with nine in real quick order. We had, and we had about 23 or 24 standing by waiting to help them out, so the other guys were, were enjoying that over there. But yeah, if you see them out in your neighborhood, feel free to stop and say hi. They'll be starting their hydrants testing and maintenance also this time of year. That'll run completely through the summer into September, so.
Thank you, Chief, John.
I get to tell some good news today. Our, the city's subarea plan and EIS for the Swift Center, the former Northern State Hospital that we completed in 2016, was given another state award. This time, it's the 2017 Governor's Smart Communities Award. And that was for the category of over 10,000, 10,000 population, so we're in there with all the big cities, and we still came away, came away with the big prize. So you've probably already heard the email, we're gonna be working with the port and the county to do a joint acceptance meeting with the council and all of their boards to collect our prize sometime in August, I believe. And then, some okay news. Next is, last I reported about our grant application to the Department of Ecology for some EPA grants to do some environmental studies down at 109 Jameson Street. They were unsure if they were going to have any money, so we just got word that there will be money, not quite as much as they had thought, but we're still looking kind of good. So we're waiting, we gotta wait a few more weeks before they can divvy it all up and figure out who's gonna get it, but we're looking a little better than we were a couple of weeks ago, and hoping to have some information around June 5th to report back. I think that's all I've got for right now. Aaron's gonna be talking about the building demo that's been going on, so I'll let him talk about that.
Hey, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor.
And congratulations, John, for that award. I mean, that's, that's a big deal.
I wanted to report on a few things tonight. The Jameson SR9 roundabout project, we had our final walkthrough with the Department of Transportation a week ago, and we're in the closeout process on that, yay. You will be seeing at the next council meeting, one final change order, settlement for SRV for an equitable adjustment on one of the bid items that significantly underran and caused their unit prices to rise, and so I've reviewed their request and found it reasonable, and I'm bringing that to you as a change order. That should be the final one for the project. Cascade Trail Project, the contractor's mobilizing this week. It actually is the same contractor, SRB, Oak Harbor. They'll be working in earnest on that starting next week, starting with some sanitary sewer work down near the former ball field area, and then moving on to the storm drainage work from that. Nathan's crew's been busy. Yesterday, they paved Alec Deth Zander Street, the section that was torn up because of the frost damage. Looks really good, and we got a nice thank you from the neighborhood for the crew and the others involved in that. So looking forward to doing more along that line in future years. They have also been very busy getting ready for the chip seal project, and we've had the pre-bid, or pre-construction meeting with the crack seal contractor. They'll be starting that work in June and doing that. I'll also be bringing, at the next council meeting, a change order under that contract. We included some aspects of the crack sealing for some of the cracking that's shown up at the Cook Ferry Roundabout location that council brought to our attention some time back. That particular contractor has the capability to do the concrete sealing as well, so I've solicited an estimate from them for that. And we've come up with a methodology we think will preserve that pavement for its design life, and I'll bring that to you as a change order at the next meeting. Wanted to let you know also that we're, we're very near the completion of the capacity report for the wastewater treatment plant, and it is providing the answers we were looking for in terms of the remaining capacity for the plant, and also is pointing out a few deficiencies we will need to deal with there in the next few years, and I'll be fully reporting on that first to the utilities committee and then to the council in the next month or so. Finally, some good news for our department and the city in general as well. As you know, we submitted an application to Skagit County for economic development funds to support the SR20 East Lane Widening Project. That's from Township to Fruitdale, and we had, we had applied for $500,000 for an $800,000 project. They awarded $300,000, which will allow us to complete at least half of the project, and so that's a good outcome. The commissioners and the panel that selected unanimously selected this particular project. I went to the awards meetings, and the other ones had some ups and downs in the comments, but that one, they felt was a no-brainer, so we were glad for that. And I think you have a copy of the email from Tricia Loeb on your desk. That's all I had, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, Brenda.
Mark, I have a question. In regards to the Cook Ferry roundabout, excuse me, the roundabout there, I sat there and watched that roundabout for close to a half an hour one day around 4 o'clock, I think it was, now. it was now, and I watched 11 semi trucks go through there, eight of which went completely straight across it. They didn't even attempt to curve around it. Is that rated for them to run across it?
Yes, it's built for that purpose. That is a truck apron. We prefer that they slow down, and generally, they do. But that was built so that the trucks, they have the larger turning radius, can drive over that.
They just went straight, they didn't retract. I mean, three of them went right around it, no problem. I don't know why the rest of them can't, because it's obvious they're going to cause some damage, even if it's rated for that. What can we do, right?
We send office ready out.
Well, it's a legal action, isn't it?
Yeah.
I've noticed that on the new roundabout too, at Jameson. Right through it.
Anything else, Mark? So that, yeah, that grant funding is very good news. Thanks for putting that package together. I know the staff had to make some last-minute changes, but it looks like it worked out. Aaron?
I wish I could tell you that we were busily receiving historic bricks down at our site and stockpiling them for the community to pick up, but in fact, they're being put in containers that are lined with black plastic, stickered with warning labels, and hauled off to hazardous materials landfill for disposal. So that's been the most frequent question. I don't know if we've quite hit 100, but I would say of all of the topics I've worked on in the years I've been in Cedar Wully, this has generated the most comments from people, phone calls, pulling me off the street, and other staff members. How can we get some bricks? We're building a patio, we're building a new house, we just want a few, how do we get bricks? And just so you know, the bricks are not, nor have they ever been owned by the city. They were the property owners, and as part of the contract between the property owner and the demolition contractor, the title to the bricks moved to the demolition contractor. And because they were unable to get in there and do a full environmental assessment, state regulations require that everything on that site be treated as potentially hazardous. So if you go down and watch them, you'll see the Ryan Construction crews wearing Tyvek suits and respirators and maintaining a wet site. That's intended to address potential airborne contamination in compliance with both LNI and Clean Air Rules, Northwest Clean Air Rules. So that's the answer to that. They did begin the demolition on Monday, they mobilized their equipment, got everything placed, including steel plates to protect the city's infrastructure, styrofoam and plywood to protect the adjoining building. Yesterday was the main day of demolition. I will say, it was pretty remarkable to watch the operator just confidently reach up and grab that first truss and just rip it down, and then the entire north wall just moved like jello, really. I mean, it just rippled like a ship's sail luffing in the wind, and the whole audience just, "Ooh." And he did it again, and I think there were about six trusses, and barely a brick went anywhere other than where that operator intended those bricks to go. I mean, it was just remarkable watching this giant machine work as an extension of the operator, so excellent work. The preliminary investigation of that common wall seems to suggest that it may not be a common wall after all. So as they were working the south wall, you could see the south wall rippling, as I described, but the Brady Building was not moving. And the visual inspection is suggesting, at the moment at least, that they're not tied, so. So I understand the current plan is to continue cleaning the site, so they're using their large excavator to pull material, crush it, pull it out, keep it wet, put it into the round robin of trucking containers to the hazardous materials facility, and once they clean it up a bit more and can get in there, probably nearing the end of the week, Friday I suppose would be a possible day, they would then attempt to remove the rest of that wall. And lastly, on that project, just so you know, as part of our right-of-way permit, they granted them access to Woodworth and Metcalf and the alley. We did restrict its use on June 2nd, so the contractor estimated 10 working days with the holiday that would put them into June. I'm hoping they beat their estimate and it doesn't become an issue, but if they don't beat their estimate, our permit requires them to pull out of the Woodworth right-of-way, maybe not entirely, but at least substantially, so the blast from the past can use that area as they intend to use it. Obviously, we're all eager to see that other wall come down so we can pull in our fencing, get the red tags off the Brady Building, and get those tenants back in there and moving. I have a couple other items for you. It's election season in Cedar Wully. Voters in our city have a total of nine offices, not everybody, but depending on where you live, there's up to nine offices, and we're now several years into hosting a candidate forum here at the city for elections that are contested that also affect people in the city. So two questions for you. One, do you want to continue that practice? And two, if so, we have three contested seats for the August primary with a total of nine candidates. Do you want to have two forums, one prior to the August and then one in October prior to the November, or just stick with our past practice of doing the October forum? I will say, in the past, we haven't had more than, I think, a single contested primary, so it was tough to form up a whole panel with just three candidates, but there are actually nine candidates for three seats, two city councils, and one school board that will be on the August ballot. So looking for some direction if we're going to move forward. I like to get candidates invited early. We've had a great success rate with, I think almost, I think we've actually had 100% attendance. Of course, we spend, the city spends about $800 to advertise this through utility billing, and we'd also put it in the City Scene Magazine to try to get the word out and invite as many people to attend as possible.
I personally like the idea of doing both August and October.
I do also, yes.
Okay, well, if that's the consensus, we'll move forward and get that organized and get invitations out to candidates and hope that they want to participate. Second item on my, or third item on my list, the RCO grant for Memorial Park. The state of Washington has yet to adopt a budget, and they're moving into another special session, it looks like. However, RCO's timeline is not suspended, so it's a little awkward in that we should have known, well, I guess it would be in April, what the final budget was, and then the end of May, there's a certification deadline for us. We may not know until June or July at this point where we stand. We are currently eight projects out in the Senate budget, I believe, and we're an alternate in the House budget. Larry Otis reminds me, however, that the last cycle, the final budget, actually funded every project. So the deadline for us is the end of May to certify our match, and I'm bringing this to you because it feels very much cart before the horse, because we don't know if we've got their funding and therefore haven't kicked off the fundraising portion of our match. Just to remind you of the dollars, this project asked for $384,000 from the state, from RCO, which requires in $384,000 in local match, and our proposed budget for this included $252,000 from the city, $150,000 of which was dollars, and the other $102,000 was in-kind, both equipment and people and materials. The remaining $132,000 we'd identified for both cash and in-kind labor from the community. So we'd like to certify because, for two reasons. One, from RCO's perspective, it looks bad if you don't certify. You can still fail out of the program later and say, "We didn't make it," although if we get awarded the funds, I would certainly hope we do everything within our power to complete the project that we proposed. But also, just looking at the last cycle, and the possibility is there that we could get funded, even though we think it's not a great possibility. So I guess I'm looking for any objections, and if there are none, our intention would be to certify just along the process as we outlined in our grant application.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then the last item, and it's in the last page of your packet, just wanted to call your attention to the Jail Community Justice Center, I think it's called now, Open House. July 11th is kind of the officials' ribbon-cutting, 2:30, and July 15th is the broad public open house. They'll be parking at the park and ride, and SCAD will be running shuttle buses back and forth at the last jail finance committee meeting. They're anticipating actual occupancy with prisoners to occur probably in early September. So they have substantial completion in May as per the project's plan. They will have full completion, they've got occupancy, they'll have possession in June, and that will kick off a 90-day training cycle for them to get oriented to the new building and be prepared for actual prisoners. So it's very exciting. At this point, the project's within budget. In fact, you hate to say it before it's over, but I would bet that the project will come in under budget. You want to double down? Under budget, I'm saying it'll come in under budget. And we expect to be able to start bringing our misdemeanor warrant offenders to jail in September. So that's exciting for the police. And that's all I've got for now.
And I just have one question, back to Dean, since you talked about the building. Some of the demolition was needed to do the fire inspection. Has that taken place, or is it still too dangerous?
That portion of it's been taken over by the county, and I haven't talked to Bonnie, she had her hands on a fatality fire, so I don't know if she got out there today.
Yeah, the preliminary indication I got was that they intended to take some portion of that, what's become rubble now, and stockpile it for fire investigators to see. I haven't actually seen a stockpile back there, so I don't know if that's happening or not. My observation, though, is the bricks, they collapsed them all into themselves, and the area that they were interested in had a second floor, and the excavator crushed that down as they brought the brick wall on top of it, so. We'll see. I mean, there's an awful lot of material crushed on top of the area they were hoping to see. Any other questions I can answer? All right, thank you.
Patsy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Did you get the consent that you needed when you were asking, gosh, earlier, earlier?
For the senior center?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so. I looked, I didn't hear any objection, appeared that the consensus of the council is to pivot the project and move forward along the lines we're talking about with the advisory committee. Anytime anybody wants to make a motion, you're welcome to do it to them. I don't think you need an actual motion for that, but if there's comfort in having it in the minutes, council's always welcome to be more formal.
Patsy?
Okay. In the normal course of my work, I tend to look at things fund by fund, and today, in reviewing the last-minute touches to the annual report, which is due to the auditors next week, I was looking at some things in total, and thought you might be interested to know that last year, the grant revenue from the state of Washington totaled $1.8 million, which is a number that's basically the same as the general property tax revenue to the city. So I thought that was kind of interesting, that, you know, $1.8 million from the state of Washington for grants, most of which came from the Transportation Improvement Board. In federal grants, it was down a bit, but thankfully, under that single audit requirement amount, $717,000 in federal grants last year, most of which came from Department of Transportation, not all in the way you might expect. The police department receives monies from Department of Transportation in their safety, highway safety, traffic safety focus program. Well, they have multiple programs for police grants. So for a total of $2.5 million in grants from the state and federal governments last year.
Okay, Judith. Thank you, Patsy.
This just reminded me that I would like to attend the training days they have, if that's at all possible, in June.
Okay, come on by, and we'll talk about scheduling that. Anything else?
No, because that hazard was on private property.
Jermaine?
Nope, nothing.
Brenda?
Nothing today.
Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Weekend.
Absolutely.
Chuck?
Yeah, I have a question for John. At the corner of Waldron and, you know where Hanson Brothers Storage Barn is, in the corner there? Well, I've had a lot of the, on Ball, the corner of Ball and Waldron, but anyway, I've had a lot of the neighbors complaining to me about the fence has longed down, and it's been down for, I don't know, two or three months, and I don't believe that's industrial property there, is it?
No, no, it's residential, but he's got a garage, but there's also a house there.
They've got a house.
Right, so it's just, you know, he's just storing a bunch of his, I don't even know if he still owns it, or who owns it now, I think.
Why don't you ride by and take a look at it, because it's really nice, or, and the neighbors are complaining about it. Don't bother me, I'm way down the street, but I have to address their problem, so I'll just drop it in your lap and you can take care of it, okay?
Is that the house? Chuck, is that the house where there was a tagging on that fence?
Pardon?
Is that the same fence where there was tagging a while ago?
Yeah.
And they kind of, they didn't want to take that down, because I actually complained about the tagging on that, and they didn't want to take, they didn't even want to take care of it.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. It's not a good thing to have out in the residence. I'd like to make a motion.
And what?
Am I in line to make a motion?
You may make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that all elected officials in Cedar Wully be limited to two terms.
I second that. The what? I didn't catch it. Elected officials limited to two terms.
Okay, motion was made by councilman, oh, and seconded by councilmember Kinzer to limit terms in Cedar Wully to two terms. Is that within the legal purviews of our city council?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I don't think so either. I think it's a state law.
I'd be happy to do a little bit of research and bring that back to the council for review, but I believe we would need to adopt a municipal charter if you wish to have term limits, and, you know, we would become instead of a non-charter code city, a charter code city, and through that additional home rule, you could create those types of rules. The example would be Snohomish County versus Skagit County. You know, in Skagit County, we've got one of the longest-serving commissioners in state history. In Snohomish County, I think you have a two-term limit on any county office, so that's why you see all those folks rotating between all the different county jobs in Snow County. But I do not believe that that motion is probably in order, and I would be glad to follow up for you at the next meeting with.
Appreciate it.
I think it's a pretty good idea, though, Chuck. Yeah, if you could just check and bring that back so we can find out, we will.
I'd be happy to.
Did I hear a motion to table Chuck's motion for further investigation?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Judith and seconded by Brett to table the motion until we get further clarification on the legality, and then we'll bring it back at the future meeting. Anything else, Chuck?
No, no, Judith, don't I?
Good luck to the candidates, incumbent and newcomers. Have a clean campaign this summer. No polling signs, no getting sloppy in that. In a couple weeks, blast from the past downtown, even with the building in disrepair, they're planning the event, it's coming along, and Jamie's going nuts, pulling her hair out trying to get it organized, but getting her done, getting vendors.
trying to get it organized, but getting her done, getting vendors, so.
So Rick, I had questions about, since JJ's isn't doing the car show part, is that on track with the new club, or do we know?
She says so.
Okay.
I asked her the other day, and she said John's been working on it.
Very good. Well, it would be disappointing if they don't step up and perform to the same level you guys did.
Ginger's got the trophies coming and dash clocks, and she says it's happening.
Very good. Anything else? Brett?
I just want to thank Chuck for bringing that up. You know, Rick is the last of the three and four termers, and I think it's something that the city has, you know, kind of, if you don't bring new ideas to the table, you just kind of sit, crossing your arms, waiting for something to happen, so thank you, Chuck.
Okay. Did you ever know, by the way, Jermaine?
I have something for Rick. I was wondering, who, when's the deadline for the car entries? That's all I was curious.
The day of the show.
The day of the show.
Show up. People there with registration forms.
Are you bringing the Jeep wagon here?
I might.
Okay.
It's in the shop.
Anything else, Brett? Okay, I have nothing. Thank you all for coming. We stand adjourned unless there's an objection. Hearing none, we're adjourned.